It is Tuesday, March 28th. The hour is 10 o'clock. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Thanks to our wonderful IT crew during this power outage. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, will you take the role, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Here.
Supervisor Howard? Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Chair Short?
I am here. If you would all join me in a moment of reflection. Thank you for that. Now if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Lopez, is there any introduction of new employees?
Yes, Chair. We have the Director of Health Human Services with us today to introduce some new employees.
Outstanding.
Good morning, Board. We have our Housing Services Manager, Roy Jackson, that's going to introduce a new employee, and then Cheyenne Hogan is going to introduce a new employee for Behavioral Health.
Good morning, Board members. This is Lauren Espy. She's one of our new peer support specialists working in the housing branch of Behavioral Health.
Very good. Welcome, Lauren. Thank you for being here.
Chair, could we have him restate that in the mic? Because it probably would have been not heard online. I'm sorry.
Roy, yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Good morning, Roy Jackson, Behavioral Health Housing Services. This is Lauren Espy. She is our new peer support specialist for Behavioral Health.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Appreciate that.
So apparently our employee isn't quite here yet, so we'll introduce her next time. Apologize.
That's great. Okay, Joel, do we have any actions to report out of closed session?
We do have one. The Board voted unanimously to defend the suit of Jennifer Perry B., County of Del Norte. It is a writ challenging the BOE's decision in an assessment appeal.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from the Board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an agenda, an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We do have one urgency item to consider. Is there any others?
The only thing I'd like to pull, four, five, six, seven, and eight from the consent?
Oh, well, okay. We will do that when we take up the consent calendar. The urgency item to be considered today is the approval of a letter of support for Pacific Court Equity Aware Enhancement of Grid Resiliency Project and grant application for funding through the U.S. Department of Energy, excuse me, Energy Grid Resilience and Innovation Partnership Program, and authorize the Chair to sign as requested. Excuse me. We were asked, I believe it was yesterday, we got this item, or we were requested from Pacific Court to submit a letter of support for this, for this project and grant application. Pacific Court wants, Pacific Court wants to, in general, replace the power lines with insulated power lines to protect from possibility of the power grid causing wildfires. So it's obviously something that, in my opinion, that we would be supportive of.
Let's move, I'll move to approve that be added.
So we are just voting at this time, not for the letter, but to add it to the agenda as a urgency item. We have a motion by Supervisor Starkey and a second by Supervisor Howard. And again, this requires a four-fifth vote to add the urgency item. Is there any public comment on adding this as an urgency item?
Hey, I'm sorry that they were late in getting this to you guys, but that doesn't, that is not an emergency. That is not considered an emergency, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't fully explain. We got this item yesterday and-
It doesn't matter. Emergency means you shut down the community and you shut down services.
Can I address that real fast, just so everybody's kind of clear?
Certainly.
There's two different exceptions. One is for an emergency, and one is just for an urgency item that came to the Board's attention after the agenda was posted and can't wait. Case law specifically says grant applications are a proper use of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Joel. Seeing no other public comment, Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. At this time, we'll receive any brief reports or announcements relative to the County of Del Norte from the Supervisors. Is there anybody who wishes to make a report?
I do. I have two items that I'm hoping to see if I could get some Board consensus on. One is I participated in a cleanup this weekend at Walmart. We partnered with Recology and Hambro and Mission Possible and Building Maintenance and Code Enforcement. It was really a great cleanup. What we noticed throughout that, though, is that it would be beneficial to have some of that brush work on the east side of Walmart cleared up, so there's some more visibility. Like they had done at the front part of the parking lot, we would like to have that at the back part. And given that it requires some permits and a little bit more lengthy work for our Building Maintenance Department, I was hoping to get consensus to direct staff to begin that permitting process.
We need to agendize that, Joel, for our next meeting, or do-
Probably. I mean, we can direct staff without it being on the agenda, but what, what that usually is, is to, directs have to come back with something. It's a little bit more of a gray area if we're directing staff to just do something that's an action. So it's safer to come back. But, but we're also dealing with a situation where staff is perfectly within their discretion to do it on their own. And so if what they want is an expression of support from the Board that that's a good use of their time, I don't think that does need to come back. I think that's fine.
Right. That's been my understanding.
You know, it definitely was helpful when they brought up that understory in that one area, but it, I agree. When we go for fires in that area, it's usually toward the back of Walmart where it's not cleared, so I would be supportive of that if the rest of the Board would just buy consensus or-
Okay. And then the second one probably would be on for future discussion as well. But we recently had a diesel spill at the Sheriff's Department. One of their tanks had leaked out some diesel. There's been, you know, controversy on exactly how much diesel that was. Some people say less than 15 gallons. Other people are anticipating it was much more. And just doing the research on that, what I, what I did learn was that there is no policy and procedure in place on how to address hazardous spills. So at this point, I was hoping that we could direct staff to make that a priority, to get a policy and procedure in place.
Have consensus that that would be a good idea for the county to have in place? Or are we going to, are we going to agendize that?
Well, I think, I think you can tell the Board, or tell staff to come back with a policy to approve. So if that's what you want, then it will come back. But it will come back as a, as a policy if that's what the Board directs. Or you could just have it come back as a discussion for a policy. That part's, I think, within your discretion.
I just think it's, it's beneficial for public safety. There was recently spills in Iowa, or Ohio and Philadelphia. And I think that if something, if this was to be a little bit more catastrophic, that for us not to have some sort of policy in place of the procedure that we follow in order to clean up these spills and the agencies that we notify, I think it's important for us to have that, you know, on the books. So I'm just feeling that, you know, it should take a priority.
I think that's personally perfectly reasonable to agendize that, that item.
Is there, there's currently nothing at all?
Yeah, there is.
What is it? When I asked Building Maintenance, he said there was no policy in place.
Yeah, through, throughout the state, there, there are rules and regulations regarding, you know, spills and how they're to be cleaned up and maintained and managed. So again, but it doesn't hurt us to have, you know, a personalized policy, especially when it comes down to, to small, small spills. But yeah, there already is rules and regulations regarding the handling and utilization of cleanup, especially by the state of California. So, yeah.
Okay.
Chair, can I get a little clarification for minutes?
Yes.
Are we directing staff to come back with a policy? Are we directing staff to come back? Are we doing a discussion at the next agenda? I just kind of need something clear.
We'll bring it back for a discussion on the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This time, we'll bring up the consent agenda. Excuse me. Supervisor Wilson, you said that you wanted to pull items from the consent agenda. Could you-
Yeah, four, five, six, seven, and eight, please.
Four, five, six, seven, and eight is noted. Right from the beginning, we are actually going to pull item number five and remove it from the consent agenda for this morning's consideration. Is there any other items that anybody would like to pull from the-
I would just like clarification on item 10. It does not have the amount, so I would like some information as to the amount.
So we will pull item 10 for answering of questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment on consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, or 14? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the Board for a motion. Five was removed, and we are taking off four, six, seven, and eight. For proof, for discussion. I've got a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
With the exception of 10, that I did not get answered, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have it pulled, written to be pulled. No?
Okay, so we will, yeah, we'll just say that that's pulled. Sorry.
So yes, for the remaining.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Supervisor Wilson, we'll start with you. Number four.
Yeah, the review of the general plan adoption. It looks like we're adding the, the housing element back or into that plan. My only review of this and, and comment is, is this was written back in 2003. And this is part of that, what, what I've been putting forward, trying to get some kind of, hopefully, we can move towards a strategic planning. But this is a document and a utilization that is in, I can see in dire need of updating and review since it hasn't really changed since 2003, except for the new housing element that we're putting into it.
Okay, thank you for that. So there's no corrections or any problems with it?
Like I say, I, I just feel that, that bringing this general plan that hasn't been updated since 2003, it is in dire need of review and update as opposed to just continuing, just like we're adding the housing element, the other elements need to be updated and reviewed by, by the Board.
Okay. Is there any public comment on consent agenda item number four?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Kind of disappointed again with the consent agenda. Who's, who determines what's consensual? Is it a dollar amount? Is it number of people killed? Is it, if we could just get a little clarification on that. As far as the housing element and being revised, I've got some information, U.S. Census vacancy status for Del Norte. Interesting information, but maybe the lack of information is more important. 1,562 total homes. 407 for vacation seasonal use. 966 others not accounted for. So maybe that'd be a good starting point coming up with a plan. I ask that we improve the standard of living and Del Norte not decrease it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson, for pulling these items. I really appreciate it. My only question is how this will affect our infrastructure as far as water and sewer. I don't, I mean, it was hard to understand. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other public comment, Kylie, would you pull the vote? Or I'm sorry, did we get a-
I did not get a motion or a second.
For, seeking a motion for accepting item number four.
Move to approve item number four?
Second.
Now with a motion and a second. Kylie, thank you. Would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Wilson, or excuse me, Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Supervisor Wilson, item number six.
Just, I'd like to see in, in six and seven both, but, and Renell, maybe you can address this, but in the request for extension, I, I'd like to see costs associated currently, what we expired, expended on these, but also the number of individuals served within the program that we're reinstating or extending contracts. You know, how many we're serving and, and also the number of individuals that we have provided service for already.
Good morning again. For item number six, so currently we've served about 25 to 30 individuals. The cost associated is actually in the Board report where we analyzed and that we had expended up to about $69,000 after quarter two is the reason for the amendment to increase the amount. This service is required of us from the state through our drug medical program, so we don't really have a, a choice whether or not we pay this cost. And those are individuals that are going out of county because there is no in-county facility for these treatment services.
And, and is it, the, the request for increase is, is, are we seeing a increase in, in utilization, is, I take it?
From what we had previously seen in the previous year, I believe so. I don't have that exact number in front of me. But usually we base our budget number based on utilization from the previous year, and since we had only budgeted $100,000 and now we're increasing it to 200,000, that definitely demonstrates the utilization. That would be the reason for the increase.
And, and that's one of the things that caused me to, to pull this up is, is those are the things we, you know, as far as, as a Board member, I like to see in, in requests. Because if we are seeing an increase, percentage increase, I like to keep track of those percentages as we can meet the need of our community. You know, what, what are we facing and, and do we need to adopt trend lines and, and allocate resources accordingly?
Yep, that makes sense.
Very good. So you've been, had your questions answered for six and seven, then Supervisor Wilson? Uh?
Okay. So number seven, HASP, is actually a revenue contract, so it's not a cost expense. And we adjusted this contract, and then there were some state changes, and so that's a, a good reason for the delay in getting it processed with HASP. And so we had to go back and reword the contract, and then some delays with the provider. I don't have actually the number of served with me, but I can get that back to you and try to remember to include that in future reports.
I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
You know, because I knew, I do know that we've had issues with HASP in the past, the court has, probation has. And so, you know, it's been an ongoing program, ongoing organization. However, how well we're getting treated and, and whether or not they're meeting the needs of the community is, you know, especially right now, because there is a, a real need for the court to, to have that, those services. But those services have to be performing at a, at a level that's going to be serving the, those that are in dire need of HASP services.
Yes.
Be addicted.
And one thing that we did add, I'm sorry, I don't recall if it was last fiscal year, but since I've been in this role, we did add a contract with a DUI monitor who will assist with ensuring that the contractor is following the state regulations and guidelines.
So, and I, I did actually have questions on seven as well, very similar to what Supervisor Wilson had. And, and I think maybe perhaps it would be beneficial for us as a Board and the community to have a brief presentation from HASP at some point in the future. I would like to know the number of clients they serve, the statistics on successful graduations from the program, their hours of operation, which is sometimes hit and miss, and then some sort of feedback from the courts on how effective that program is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on consent agenda items six and seven?
So for number seven, I do have a concern about HASP. I know it's a much-needed program, but I remember 11 years ago, a person who was part of that program had me deliver the director fish so that they would mark him down as being there. And so I think that there should be some kind of oversight on that program. You know, because if people are just going to buy their way out of it, what's the point in having it? As far as number six, I'm wondering if the utilization for this treatment is like an ultimatum that's been given by the judge to go get treated or go to jail, or I don't know, you know, you never know what. But that may be why there's an increase in the, the needed dollars. So that's something to, I mean, something to think about. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning again, and thank you. In regards to number five, six new employees for-
Brandon, we've pulled, we're not considering five today.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. How is that determined for-
I'm sorry.
Consensual? I mean, nobody's determined it's not consensual now? Or how does that determine, how is that determined? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, no. In regards to number six and seven, we also have a budget transfer later in the agenda for almost $300,000 going towards drug dependency, and it just seems like we're kind of feeding this negative decline and wish that we reverse course. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for items six and seven?
Move to approve items six and seven.
You got a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, Supervisor Wilson, item number eight.
Yeah, my concern, or at least the thing I hadn't seen in this request for a letter of, on the potential risks to water from the Roddy Creek. One of my concerns on, on the Smith River is the mineral rights of the, the different mining operations that are on there. It's been an ongoing problem for years on land rights and access. The U.S. Forest Service, as well as the state, have been in, in litigation with the, the claims of those mines, limiting access to and, and having their claims basically taken away from them without, without any process or by following the rules of the, the laws pertaining to mineral rights. And so not only, you know, do we need to be concerned about the risks to, to the water from any of these legacy mines that are out there, but there is also on the opposite side, the taking by the U.S. Forest Service and, and the state on denying access to these claims and limiting or even restricting their utilization or denying the utilization of, of people that have legal claims up there in these areas. And so it's an ongoing battle, but I, I, you know, I have problems supporting something at this point when I have, when I know that the opposite, there are issues, and this is an action that they're taking that, again, is, is trying to throw those that have legal claims up there from being able to utilize their resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just, I want to add, though, that my, my questions on this is, is what does remediation entail? I just felt like for us to sign off on a letter, I had to do a Google search. I don't have the same history and the knowledge that Supervisor Wilson just expressed. So for, for me to feel comfortable signing off on this, I would have liked to have been educated some more on it through some sort of Board report other than just a letter and me having to do my own Google search.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Borges, did you have something?
I mean, I think, can we just ask Grant to come on up and speak on a lot of these concerns and issues that are being asked?
We certainly could.
He would have the best answers out of anybody here.
Yeah, I, I had similar, similar questions. If, Grant, if you could come up and maybe attempt to answer these, yeah. I was kind of curious what remediation meant as, as well. And as part of me looking into it, looked up water quality reports that the city puts out every quarter, and it didn't look like these items, these, these minerals were being detected in the water, you know, arsenic and those heavy metals that were, were mentioned. So I'm curious why, why we would want to disturb ground for wells that aren't causing a problem. If you could-
Good morning Supervisors. Grant Wersko here, and so I'm here in a couple capacities. First, as the acting chair of the Smith River Collaborative, and it was Supervisor Jerry Hemmingson that co-chaired the collaborative with the Smith River Alliance. And just as background, the nine signatory stakeholders in that collaborative be the county, Fire Safe Council, and there's four environmental groups that, there's been some history of, you know, appeals and challenges on projects that agreed to work with the, with the county and the Fire Safe Council, timber industry, and our two tribes here in the county. And so in two thousand sixteen, Jerry and I convened those parties with the intention of, how do we get things done? Not argue, but get things done on behalf of the community. Very successful, several million dollars raised to improve the safety of our community, particularly related to fuels in our wildland urban interface areas. And so those grants have come to the Forest Service, the Fire Safe Council, and I think the most recent was about three million dollars to the Toluah Dany. And it was that highest urgency that the collaborative really directed their efforts there. Very effective and very efficient. One of the other things that Jerry and I routinely did was ask the Forest Service, and let's be reminded, they're the largest landowner in this county. We would ask the Forest Service, well, what have, what are the other issues that we should be concerned about as a community? And how can we help you do something about it? And recently, that question I put to the district ranger, Kathy Allen, who you've been briefed by previously, and they reported, well, there's some funding needs here, there's some funding needs there, but there's this issue of mine contamination. It's not new. The Union Tsar Mine, which you could call it an abandoned mine, these are mines, in many cases, where the parties that mined them can't be found, they don't have any association with them anymore, and then they're a community risk. We had one community member actually drive their vehicle into a shaft and die. Then that had to be remediated, had to be closed off. The Union Tsar Mine, what remediation meant there is you actually went in with bulldozers, pulled out the material that had been mined out of the pit that was left, but was not used, but which was really leaching contaminants into the headwaters of Rowdy Creek. That material was then pulled back from the creek, and it was contained in an area that was removed from the water, so it would not leach anymore. But the whole process is funded through the superfund process. CIRCLA is the acronym for it. There's a lot of competition for that money. And there's a lot of mines that require abatement all over California. And again, the same situation, some of these mines are a hundred years old. And fortunately, in our case, the National Recreation Area staff had retained money and had a list of priority mines. So they've got a list that's already there. And I should reassure Supervisor Wilson, none of the mines that are on the priority list to be addressed have existing owners which can be found. So these are mines that pose a public risk to water quality, and then there is attention to how do we get funding for them? So by talking to staff, they gave me the briefing about, you know, what would be the top priority sites, and there's a couple right around what we know as longtime residences, Alta or Altaville. The map was sent around, shows them, and they're named. This particular letter, what we endeavor to use is that multi-party support that the collaborative represents. You've got all those different stakeholders saying, okay, this is important to us, and by coming to you, and what I did a couple of weeks ago as I briefed your natural resources goal committee on this. And what came up in that natural resources goal committee? If there's one issue in this community that you can count on to get the support of the community, it's drinking water. And we had unanimous votes from the city council, which is this, this community's largest water purveyor, to address water quality issues. Big Rock Community Service District, Gasky's Community Service District, they had consistently stepped up and said, deal with these issues. So when I heard from Forest Service staff, there was a problem in the headwaters of Rowdy Creek, which Rowdy Creek then serves that Smith River community, I realized this is a top priority, and it's the type of top priority that is, really resonates in this community, its water quality. So that is why I came to the county and said, this looks like a no-brainer based on the way our communities reacted to these issues before. And, and then Supervisor Starkey, remediation would likely take that same approach, where you remove those leaching materials that are so close to the water, they're right in the water, that they endanger that water supply, you pull them back. And probably the cost is around about two and a half million. But what really changes the effort to get the money is when we look like we're a team. And by having the collaborative send a support letter, which they will, and then having the county specifically, that really improves our position to compete for money. And then later on this coming month, we will have the regional forester, that's the senior most forest service person in the state of California, we'll have the forest supervisor and the district ranger all out on a field trip, and we will try to specifically show this location in Altaville to highlight the urgency of it, and again, improve this community's ability to get funding for remediation. So it's about competing for money, it's about water quality, and are there any other questions? Or, you know, did I answer your questions sufficiently?
I have a question. We'll get to public comments soon.
Um, no, you did, and, and I, you know, I apologize for being ignorant on it, but a lot of times if I'm not on the natural resources goal committee, I'm not going to have that information. So, you know, just for me personally, is that a presentation followed by the ask at some point would be beneficial for me, so I can get educated on the topic? You know what I mean? I can't just Google search things and then think that I'm going to know it all. So, you know, for, for me, I, I'm understanding what you're saying, but I, I still am going to stand by my request for more information before I can vote on something.
For me, I'd, I'd be very supportive of, of a letter going out, especially if it was far more site-specific. In other words, those, those areas like Alta, because I know it's, 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 it poses not only a, a threat to leaching, but it poses a threat to, to those that are RV utilizations out there and, and-
Exactly.
-those that are recreating out there, you know, just even walking around. So, so I have no, no problem if it was, if it was more site-specific, project-specific, I would, I would be very supportive.
Well, we could certainly add in that letter in the Altaville District.
What site is that? I'm sorry, I'm looking on the map.
It's, it's very close to-
And it actually, the word that it uses Supervisor Starkey is Alta. And you'll see a little star by-
Ninety-two, Site ninety-two. Looks like Occidental Group is very close to the Alta Mine area.
Supervisor, back to the question I had, you know, the, the water quality reports aren't showing that there's contaminants in the water now. So it, it seems, and certainly I'm no expert, it seems like going up and disturbing the ground around those mining materials would, would kind of have an opposite effect of what we want. Seems like it would-
No, let me clarify something. You referenced City of Crescent City water monitoring. The Forest Service, again, the largest land manager here, they have done homework with the help of consultants identifying the ninety sites, ninety of these mines that require abatement. And along with that is they identified, well, what is the risk? What are the contaminants that are coming from those ninety sites? And so those are all sites that superfund money could eventually be used on, but it's a slow process, and as I was pointing out earlier, there's a lot of competition for that funding nationally. So, you know, if a Forest Service person was here, they could certainly speak to those previous studies that documented the threat. And, you know, arsenic was noted as a contaminant and other metallic ores. And so they presented, the Forest Service presented me as the acting chair for the collaborative. This is a priority, this is why it's a priority, it's a threat to drinking water, and specifically to Rowdy Creek. Now, let's be clear, Rowdy Creek comes in below where the city of Crescent City takes its water. Do you understand? Okay. So it could very well be that if you look at the Crescent City monitoring at their intake, which is upstream of the Dr. Fine Bridge there off of South Bank Road, that would not show contaminants in Rowdy Creek, which comes in much lower down on, into the estuary. So, you know, we can't use City of Crescent City monitoring, but what you can use is the City of Crescent City is absolutely the biggest champion. The City of Crescent City is the biggest champion on dealing with threats to our drinking water. Consistently voting unanimously to deal with mining-related threats. Yeah.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to-
Pardon me?
I don't think anybody's really going to debate you that we want clean drinking water. I was just trying to figure out where, where are we finding out that our water's contaminated? And, and I use-
If you can't, if we can't trust, if we can't trust the largest public agency managing land in this county, when they tell us, when they tell us this is an issue, well, then I think we can, you know, to me, when I go to them and I, we have an excellent working relationship with them, they've been fantastic partners, and there's been other superfund funding that's helped pay for these. But certainly if you want to wait to hear from them directly, you certainly can. You know, I have a mind that when the community says, hey, drinking water's important to us, let's pay attention to it, let's compete for the funding that's available to the public, and let's get those issues taken care of. So that's why this got on the agenda.
And, and for myself, you know, like I say, if, if this was site-specific, I'd be, I'd be really on board with it. However, like I said, you know, when we look to the US Forest Service, I have to see the facts. I, I have to see their reports, I have to see the details. And everybody wants clean drinking water, but I'm not going to act out of fear. You know, the fear of something, if it's not present, it, it really doesn't, doesn't bode to, to, to take action. And I'm, kind of agree with Darren in some cases is, is, yeah, anytime you go to a mine, you're going to find these elements, especially gold mining, because they, those were tools utilized at the time for extraction, and so you're going to find those elements there. However, if they're not currently causing and not showing up in the water supply, you're, you're likely to cause them to have exposure when you disturb those mines as opposed to sealing up, closing them down. You, you, you may end up, you know, disturbing the, the, the site and causing those to actually get into the water system and, and leach in because you're, you're now moving materials. But until I see the facts from, from the, from the US Forest Service, and, yeah, I, I don't trust them because I, I see the, the gross mismanagement of our lands out here, and they're not doing a good job. I, you know, I'd love to see them do a, a far better job, but unfortunately, they're, they're in the same boat that we are. They spend over ninety percent of their budget on operational costs and not on, on actually putting tools to the ground to maintain our, our forests out here and, and, and keep our roads open. So, yeah, I, I have to see the facts before I would sign something.
Well, I need to respond to two things. First of all, you had a supervisor here in Jerry Hemmingson that did not operate on fear. He operated on wisdom, familiarity with the agency, he knew who to listen to, and then he stepped forward to lead. And I think that what we want to do is follow in those footsteps because there are issues when we work together, we can bring funding to them. And on the matter of causing greater harm, the best consultant, when, when you receive superfund money, the best consultants are retained in terms of what is called remediation. And generally, the cost-effective remediation is the type that I described. Not where you haul the site, you know, haul the material two hundred miles away to treat it, but where you move it back away from a water source and you contain it. It's all, that whole process is overseen, you have the best contractors implementing it. It's what was done with the Union Tsar Mine. I, I can send around a fact sheet about how that was done. And that is what would be done with these other sites. So it's not new. You know, I, I, I'm just surprised that, you know, people are unfamiliar with this, but hey, we'll share more information. And, and, you know, we want to compete as best we can for this funding. And, you know, being complacent is not a good thing. And, and I do want to, you know, speak on behalf of the Forest Service that I, in my work, which is very, very close with them, I see them, I see quality people doing the best that they can. Yes, there's some short staffing from time to time, but the amount of excellent work that's been done in cooperatively with the Smith River Collaborative has been outstanding. And so hopefully, you know, people will understand that, and if they don't understand it, they should ask questions, go on field trips. And in that regard, I want to invite anybody that would like to attend a wildfire preparedness meeting, which we are hosting with the Forest Service, with the Fire Safe Council, and other agencies, and that would be this coming Saturday. And that's for fuels reduction work that will be done in the South Fork Canyon. And if you want more information about that, let me know, but we're hosting it at the Smith River Alliance's Rock Creek Ranch property at ten AM. So, any further questions?
In the past, on any other remediation efforts, like on the Tsar one, I think, did you, on monitoring, was there any spikes in anything after you removed material? I mean, I think that's kind of the fear, is once you start disturbing, it's going to spike. There wasn't any spike, correct?
No, it was, it was a successful remediation. And the way that funding works, there is some required monitoring afterwards, and if there is any problem, then you're required to go back. But that's the whole point, is to be removing that material that's leaching from the immediate water source. And, and I mean, that's, that's why you're doing it, is, you know, a couple million dollars worth of investment of protecting your water supply.
So then I, and I guess if, are we waiting till there is arsenic in the water supply before we look at doing something? Is that kind of what I'm, because we're not finding it now?
No, there's, there's arsenic, there's arsenic leaching now. There are other metallic ores leaching now. That is why these are the priority sites that were provided to me by the Forest Service. Okay, that's, headwaters of Rowdy Creek, and that's pretty much in that Alta area that we were talking about on the, on the map. Hardscrabble Creek, which is another creek which originates there and then comes into the Middle Fork. There's a couple sites on Hardscrabble Creek, too. And in earlier material, I did send, it lists about four of the identified sites. And in earlier material, I did send, it lists about four of the identified sites. You know, four specific sites that were up in that immediate Alta area that Dean was referring to.
And then can you explain the process of if you were to get the funding, what happens after the funding is acquired?
The Forest Service then submits material to recruit the contractor to perform the remediation effort. And they have, again, done this previously with the Union Tsar Mine. And so there's a recipe to, you know, what needs to be done. That contractor's retained, and then that work is performed, and then there's the post-project monitoring.
Any other questions for Grant? Okay, Grant, we're gonna open this up for public comment.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
How dare you, Darren Short, try to hide this from the public? Let me read to you what, to the public, what was in your documents. Legacy mines in the Smith River National Recreation Area pose a serious threat to the drinking water of downstream communities in Delnore County. Over 90 legacy mine sites containing hazardous mine waste have been inventoried, assessed, and prioritized as a need to address contaminants. Hazards include toxic levels of arsenic and various metallic ores. A cluster of priority sites are located in the headwaters of Rowdy Creek, which is an important municipal water source for the Smith River community. And you're not bothered by this? You are gonna rubber stamp this unless Mr. Wilson pulled it? It was for a different reason, obviously, but this is disgusting. Why you use the consent agenda to hide things like this from the public? It's, I don't even know, you know, you had a reputation out at the prison and being a lop? Your leadership is the same. Get it together, folks. I'm sick of it. I mean, this is our water, and you don't even care. Oh, well, let's just rubber stamp it because the public doesn't need to know. That's how you do your business. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for pulling this item. I live in Smith River, so I was curious, can anyone know where that water would come from for the water district? Are there reports of arsenic in our water?
That's a great question.
Maybe some action would be better than writing a letter. My family would appreciate that. I don't think so. I don't think there is. They've been measuring it. We do have a, I'm not sure who this gentleman is or who he represents, the Forest Service or Smith River Collaborative. If he resides in the community or not, I'm not sure. He should know that Smith River does have its own water district. You know, I understand that you get money when you declare an emergency, when you make people feel threatened. I feel kind of dirty when I leave here after you just subject the community to getting all these grants and free money. Our water, I don't think it's contaminated, but don't express that it is and think it's consensual. And if you think there is something wrong with it, do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, can I just address something?
Certainly.
So people keep stating that stuff is hidden when it's on the consent agenda. I just want to make clear that it is posted Friday. All the attachments are there. The public can see it. I put it together. I just, I kind of take offense to it because I'm the one that pulls it together, and there's nothing there that's hidden. I just want that for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie.
Putting up with me, thank you. It's not that you're trying to hide something, but these topics have relevant consequences, you know, and they need to be discussed. And, you know, it's almost like a dirty word, too, using transparent. You know, it's okay to say transparent. It's okay to be transparent.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for consideration on this item. Motion would be appropriate.
Yeah, I'd move to make that motion, but I just want to double-check the pulse of what we're discussing here today because for me, when the collaborative brought this to our attention at the Natural Resources Committee meeting, it seemed like a no-brainer, literally, because our partner, the Forest Service, finally started doing some amazing work around fuel management in our forest, which we have been begging for for decades, is now moving to address topics specific to water quality. We do know for a fact at the headwaters of some of these legacy areas, and specifically Ratty Creek, in Copper Creek itself, which is a tributary, we do see those legacy materials moving down. We do know that because the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board has been doing testing on those legacy materials for almost a decade now. And specifically copper, copper is what is being detected in there. I'm not familiar with the arsenic piece of that, and I have not looked into it, but copper is one of the things that they are detecting above any agricultural area. And copper, we know, is one of the things that was mined up there besides chromium and some other resources. So we do know that leaching is taking place. I think the advantage of the partnership that we've seen come from the Smith River Collaborative with the various partners, including the Talawatini Nation, the Uro tribe, is the fact that we have a group that helps raise funding that allows the funding to be addressed here on our national forests, which, as was said by Mr. Werschel, the largest private or public landowner within our area. If we could do one thing, in this case, address that highest priority site where this is occurring, which is the intent of us writing a letter to Congressman Huffman to grab some of those dollars available through that superfund site, then I think it would be us as a board to make that push with that letter of support to see if we could compete with other areas that need superfund dollars also. So, again, yeah, it seems like an easy thing to me, but my apologies for really not discussing this a little bit more detail so other board members can be familiar with some of the concerns I've seen within District 3 specific to not only fuel loading, but also water quality issues.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. And just to answer that, yeah, obviously, you know, if it was brought to us that, you know, we are finding arsenic and, you know, other harmful materials in our water, and we need to abate that, absolutely, that's obviously a no-brainer. But, yeah, just not seeing that any kind of water reports that say that there is a problem, kind of just, that was my question as to why we were here.
Tim Hoon, a county resident, District 3 resident. And we utilize Smith River Community Service District water out at work. And on the most recent, it's called the Water Report from Smith River Community Service District. It's on their website. I was just looking it up to the discussion here. It shows, it's from 2020. And to your point about the copper, it doesn't say arsenic isn't a typical thing they test for, I don't believe. But out of 20 samples, seven tested above the level needed for, recommended for copper. So seven out of 20, the level, the testing level, the limit for copper is, looks like 1.3 parts per million, and seven of them tested at 2.2 parts per million. So I appreciated the discussion and was wondering, hey, what's in the water we're drinking at work? You know, so, but it's there on the website. Seven out of 20 tested high in copper, and one out of 20 tested high in lead. It's on the Smith River Community Service District website.
Thank you for bringing that to us, Tim.
Yeah, and again, it goes back to my point that had that been a presentation and had that, all that information been provided to us where we had somebody come in and talk about that level of copper and what that could potentially do, and that relates back to these mines, then I would be 100% on board here today. But I just feel like I don't have all the information I would have needed to vote on this, so I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
Sam, if you have a public comment, Sam, could you come to the mic?
Sam Stray, Crescent City. I hear a lot of talk about, you know, contaminants in the water. And as Chair Short has mentioned, apparently Crescent City tests the water, and the levels are clearly not excessive. Is there some sort of testing mechanism going for the Smith River Water District that would also indicate what kind of problems there are with our water? I mean, copper and chromium and a number of other metals are commonly found in hills above here and were mined, I mean, for hundreds of years, well, not hundreds of years, but for at least 100 years. How much is, you know, what we're seeing, natural leaching rather than something as a result of a mining operation? Do mining operations, for instance, bring in metals to their operations to, you know, actively be involved in the process? Or is it something that in the course of mining, they're exposing copper to the elements and therefore allowing it to leach into the streams? I mean, we don't know a whole lot about anything. I mean, I listened to this gentleman talk about, you know, crisis-level, you know, crisis-level events with regards to our drinking water, yet we don't know where the stuff comes from, at least from what I'm hearing here, in terms of whether or not it's from natural sources or whether it's from something that had to do with the mining, actual mining operation. So, I mean, I think that we need a whole lot more information before you start talking about taking action on something. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, this is a letter of support to seek grant dollars. And I could understand some reasons to abstain, decision, and I would, at this point, choose to table it until the board has the necessary information from the collaborative in order to make the right decision. But I would hate to see us pass up an opportunity in the future to address some of these legacy mine issues that are leaching harmful metallic contaminants into our drinking water sources. So I just hope in the next couple of weeks, we can address this on our next board meeting agenda.
Thank you. So, close the public comment, I guess. Do we need a motion to continue this item to?
Yeah, we should do a motion to table.
So if I do have a motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Chair, could you please clarify, was it Starkey or Borges?
It can be Supervisor Borges.
That was very nice of you, Supervisor Starkey.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Thank, yes, thank you. We've not forgotten about our proclamation, but we do have some timed items to address.
I just need, we didn't do 10 as well, Chair, I'm sorry.
We can, but we do have timed items. We have a 10-25 timed item that we're running a little bit late for. And that is our public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board digs up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any general public comments? This is the general public comment period, yes.
Okay, so it's my understanding, and it was placed out on social media, is that you folks don't want to report out anymore. Hey, that's fine. If you don't want to report out, that's fine, but guess what? I'm gonna have to start submitting SEPA requests to get all your emails, your texts, and anything else I can get ahold of to make sure there's no conversations going on between you folks. Because reporting out is the time where every entity, every meeting that you attend before your meetings, you have, you bring it back here to let the public know what's going on. And it's your time to voice what's going on. You can't have serial meetings or secret phone call meetings and all this other stuff when you don't report out. That's just plain-ass stupid, okay? But look who's running the place. I highly suggest to stop this lack of transparency that's going on with this board now. It's outrageous. You got a clerk developing the consent agenda item? What's gonna be rubber stamped and what's not? I have an issue with that, obviously. What's going on? Sure it was. Sure it was. Obviously, the water issue, there was no importance to that until this gentleman came up and started talking. You can't do that. I'm going to Sacramento soon. Let's see what I can do down there.
I'm just gonna apologize for always being up here and never saying anything nice. I do appreciate you guys. You guys have a lot on the table, a lot of different demands. I do appreciate the time and commitment that you and your families make, so thank you. It's good you pulled number five off consent. Odd that you're gonna have to go back to consent, but, you know, we're hiring more medical staff and stuff for the government all the time. And when did government, like, just take on the role of medical provider? It's a slippery slope, and it's very bad if we start taking accountability for everybody, because then we're gonna have to be responsible for their actions. And then, so we're hiring there, but we're losing jobs elsewhere in the community. You know, very limited private industry. I understand charter is supposed to be leaving end of the week. You know, how many jobs are gonna be leaving there? You know, just that less of opportunity. What are customers supposed to do? You know, if we can get, you know, we just gave $200,000 to nonprofits, you know, to a radio so we can advertise, or to foundations that we collect rent from, but we can't figure out how to promote some private industry? You know, give $200,000 to a private company willing to come in and make an investment? It can be the same, you know? So all we see is government from our government. I'm asking you to do something to incentivize private industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Dave Powell. Thanks for the opportunity. And I just want to get up and make sure that you continue to hear that vacation rentals are a good thing. They bring people to our community. They bring dollars to our community. And it's a real good way to create flow of information. I did, in the last week, speak with a motel owner, manager, rather, and if he, what his feeling was about vacation rentals, and he said he loves them. They take up overflow for them. They're not impacted by them at all. It's really a benefit to him. So I think it's, you know, it's a good thing. Just so you know, we are creating an advocacy committee that will advocate for vacation rentals. We're, there's lots of information out there talking about the benefits, and you'll be hearing from us on that, too. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Thank you. Any other public comment?
So I just need to clarify something, that our clerk of the board is not the one that sets the consent agenda. She's just the one that provides you all with all the information and all the public access to everything. She's not setting our consent agenda. So I don't think that was fair to blame her for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, she said that she prepares the consent agenda. She does not choose what is on consent. So we will move to our 10:30 timed item that is conducting a public hearing to provide the public with an opportunity to hear and provide comment on the results of activities involved under community development block grants. And that is CDBG 1290, 12901, 20 CDBG 00073. And our action item is to accept the final results through these grants as meetings, the requirement of the grant, and the various agreements between the county and sub recipients, as requested by Tony. Welcome this morning, Tony.
Good morning. I'll give a little bit of a background of the community development block grant for the new supervisors. Community development block grant, or CDBG, is a program that is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Community Development. The principal objective of a CDBG grant is the development of viable urban communities. HCD receives funding from the federal government that then passes it through the state, and the state issues a notice of funding availability on an annual basis that calls for counties, non-entitlement communities, such as ours, to apply for competitive grants. Del Norte County in the past has utilized CDBG funds to improve community facilities, services, revitalize neighborhoods, expand affordable housing, and economic opportunities that benefit low to moderate income individuals. As a part of the public participation requirements of the grant, we were required to conduct public hearings at several, sorry, several stages of the grant process, including design, application, and closeout. Notices of these public hearings are published in the paper, and this public hearing is to conduct, closeout for three grants. The first being, in 2018, we were awarded $500,000 to perform public services activities. Those included children's advocacy program operated by CASA of Del Norte and a senior nutrition program operated by the Del Norte Senior Center. During the performance period, which is generally 36 months, both act services accomplishments were reported as follows. CDBG funding for CASA, they were able to assist 282 individuals, or children, excuse me. And Del Norte Senior Center was able to provide healthy nutritional meals to over 3,706 of those in our community that are 60 and older. The county also receives funding for general administration. Basically, that funding is utilized for my time in order to operate the grant, all of the necessary reporting, which is quite tedious, as well as sub recipient oversight. In 2020, the second, the second set of grant that was, is being closed out today, was funding that was awarded under the community development block grant Coronavirus Aid Relief Security Act, or CDBG CV, which was a special funding allocation that the program or activity had to be specifically impacted by COVID. Under this, we were able to continue funding the senior center to support its senior nutrition program, which directly addressed the problem of food insecurity among seniors who were impacted by the pandemic stay-at-home orders and who were at higher risk of serious illness due to COVID. This had a shorter expenditure deadline and performance period of 24 months, and the CV-funded public service allowed for the senior center to address the need for an additional 2,280 meals to those 60 and older in our community. This also came with some general administration. The fact that HCD increased the amount of reporting during this period, the additional funding was appreciated because they've increased the amount of backup materials that are responsible for being reported to the state because of the COVID-related nexus. So basically, this public hearing is being conducted to provide the public with an opportunity to hear an update on how many individuals were served with the funding, and that we met the requirements of this grant and to obtain a board approval to accept the final results. So if there's any questions?
Thank you, Tony. Is there any questions from the board?
Tony, this is remarkable, and I appreciate all the work that you do. You do so much work behind the scenes. It's just amazing. So, my only question that I have is that, don't we issue the CBD grants every year? Or is this just a biannual?
No, basically, what happens is the state issues the notice of funding availabilities on an annual basis. Generally, that's in January of each year.
Okay.
This year, we're late because of the delays on the side of HCD. We're looking at January, or June, excuse me, June for the next NOFA. So yes, it is on an annual basis that we could apply.
Okay. And then we do typically apply each year?
It depends on the circumstances. There are, there are rules that, basically, it's called the 50% rule. So if you have, like, a senior center, for instance, they were awarded funding again in 2021, which they're just starting now to utilize because of the whole process to get the standard agreements in place and whatnot, and sub recipient agreements. But if they have not spent down 50% of their grant, they will not be eligible to apply during this open period.
Okay, thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Tony, for making the presentation. I, you know, personally, I'd like, I'd love to see the recipients be here to present, just so they could showcase. Because CASA does some amazing things. And the senior center, their outreach, you know, services a lot of people, and these dollars went for good purposes.
Agreed.
I mean, I'd love to see more senior access, especially in Klamath, because they're severely lacking. What they did have, it got shut down and hasn't restarted. But, but, yeah, you know, to be able to serve. So I'd love to give them an opportunity to showcase themselves and let the public know where that money is spent.
Sure.
I mean, you did a great job, but.
No, no, I understand.
But I'd love for them to be able to stand up and take a bow.
I will add that to the upcoming future.
It gives them a little bit of time, but it, hopefully, it'll let the public know what we're doing with their money. So, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Tony, thank you. You gave a great presentation, unlike some departments that get up here and they read whatever is written in a book. Secondly, I'd like to say, I apologize, Kylie. I misunderstood what you were saying. I don't know why you would take offense to preparation of the consent agenda when you got somebody that doesn't know what he's doing giving you the items. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. A motion would be appropriate at this time.
I will move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Okay. Item number 17, our 10:40 timed item. Receive a presentation on the communications interoperability assessment from Consultant Federal Engineering and authorize phases two and three of the communications interoperability assessment to begin as requested by the Office of Emergency Services.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We're two pleasures. We have some representatives from Consultant Federal Engineering, who was hired by the county to conduct a communications interoperability assessment for us. They have completed phase one, and they're here with us today to share a PowerPoint and a presentation. I think they're with us today, anyway. They're supposed to be joining us by Zoom. And this is also to authorize phase two and phase three of the project to move forward with that. And it's really to reauthorize it. The board has already authorized it, but it's been a while since we had this item on the agenda, so I wanted to bring it back. It was contingent on securing funding, which we have through the emergency management preparedness grant, which will fund phase two and three, and also funded phase one.
Thank you, Neil.
So I think it should be David, who is the project manager from Federal Engineering.
David, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you for hanging on.
You're welcome. Thank you. I just want to share my screen. Just, are you seeing that?
No.
There we go.
There we go. Now it's coming. Now we can see it, David.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll try and keep it brief, understand and appreciate your time this morning. So, as the introduction, my name is David Termez, and I'm the project manager for this project, leading it with a couple of the team on this call as well. So I just want to present to you a summary of what we found in this first phase. So apologies for Rajit Javer's absence this morning. He could not make it. He had a last-minute issue that came up that he had to address. But hopefully, he trusts us, trusted you that you're in good hands with the three of us on the phone, on the call. David Termez, again, so I've been with Federal Engineering for about eight years in the radio industry, running projects for them. Prior to that, I was in the industry for about 15 years, also doing project management of radio projects from cradle to grave. So, just a bit of my background and experience to date. So, just like to introduce briefly the other two on board on as well. So, Lewis?
Yes, Luis Camarillo, Senior Consultant, Federal Engineering, 15 years with Federal Engineering, and 20 years in industry assessing a number of city, county, and statewide systems for public safety and non-public safety. And we'll be presenting some of the slides here in a minute on our findings and summary of phase one. Chuck?
Good morning. Chuck Burdian, Senior Consultant with Federal Engineering. I've been working for Federal for nine years, but prior to that, I spent 38 years in public safety dispatch in Sacramento and Alameda Counties.
Okay, thank you. So the agenda for this morning is just to briefly, very briefly, touch on the scope, present to you the findings from phase one, and then talk about the next steps. So this project is a three-phase. It's got, as we just heard, this is the first, phase one is the assessment. Second is the evaluation, and then we move into the recommendation. All of this is targeted to be completed by the end of the year. As was recently, previously stated, that we need approval to move to the next phase. Funding has been approved now that we heard about a month or two back for the next two phases. So we just need approval on the findings and the presentation to date to continue on phase two. So the first phase, we actually collected the existing documentation from the county. We reviewed, you know, all the configuration, the equipment that you have out on sites. We conducted, we had two people, Lewis and Chuck were on site to conduct user interviews with 10 agencies, and then two of us were remote on, that participated in the interviews as well. So we collected information on not only the existing system, but also to determine what their requirements were and what the needs were for a future system, for a future upgrade to the system. During that time, Lewis stayed on and conducted visits. He went to go see, we had a bit of a challenge with the weather conditions, but we did get to see some sites. Other than that, we also got information on the site condition from vendors. So we got good information on that. So as I said, we collected not only existing system information on challenges and issues and problems that you're experiencing to date, but also to try and understand what you're looking for in the next update to the system. We summarized all those, the findings, and we delivered the draft report to the county for review. We got a lot of comments back. We integrated and provided an updated final report on 310. And this presentation and findings here is based on that report. These are the areas that we covered, just to look at the radio system, to see where, you know, the actual coverage, to make sure of the actual spectrum, make sure there will be frequency band, if it is actually suitable, if there's alternatives that are available. We looked at the actual maintenance plan, how you are maintaining the system today, who you've got interoperable communications with the partner agencies, and then the actual condition and the various models of the switch cover radios. Okay, so I think, sorry. Okay, let's move on.
Yes, I'll take it from here, David.
Yeah, sorry, my mouse is just, there we go.
I see. So, yes, as mentioned, a lot of the details, or all of the details, are in the reports. We will keep it at a high level here, as far as our summaries from those interviews, from the onsite visits, from the documentation review. So, we're talking about the radio communication systems in the county, and we know that it consists of VHF, very high frequency band, that's 150 megahertz, for sheriff's office at several sites, including Red Mountain, Camp 6, within Crescent City, as well as a standalone repeater at county jail. As far as fire agencies, also have VHF frequencies at some of the similar sites, or same sites, the Washington Fire Hall, Camp 6, as well as REQA. And then there's a number of local tactical repeaters throughout the county, in Gasky, Smith River, and Fort Dick, which we've documented all of those frequencies, as well as locations. And we do know that there's plans to relocate the Red Mountain site, and in subsequent phases, we will look at those alternate candidate sites, or those replacement sites. We do know from our assessment that the system, the infrastructure, the antenna systems for those repeater sites are aging, up to 20 years in some cases. So that degrades performance over time. And therefore, it correlates with the issues that were identified during the interviews regarding coverage, and how, you know, the system performs in today's environment. So we have all those locations identified. There's over, you know, 14 of those. And in some cases where that radio coverage is inadequate, agencies do have to rely on cellphones for communicating with other agencies or within their own agency. So therefore, with those findings, FE recommends, you know, new antenna systems with all of the associated hardware. You know, we're talking about transmission lines, combiners, mounting hardware, lightning protection, which protects those systems. And as well as, probably the most important, is prioritizing where those coverage improvements should be in an attempt to address as many as possible. We do know that, based on our assessment of the current frequencies, the spectrum that's being used, on a normal day-to-day basis, there were not that many major issues reported by the stakeholders. However, we do know that large incidents then do introduce some channel congestion. And we do know that there's, in some cases, agencies have a large number of channels programmed in their radios, but less than half of them are used on a regular basis. So we, subsequent phases will look at how to, you know, come up with a better plan to better utilize those channel banks in the radios. So therefore, our assessment is that the agencies, both fire and sheriff, leverage reused or existing licensed VHF frequencies with any additional FCC coordination and licensing needed for any additional sites or channels that may be added in the system expansion or replacement. I know we have another slide on reliability and maintenance, as David mentioned, how it's being maintained. And so far, the system has performed from a reliability, staying online, with no major outages. So it's performed well. We do know that we did not see a central location for network management. You know, so sometimes identifying when a component is failing is difficult to diagnose remotely until somebody calls, you know, that there's an issue with the site. So there, with, just like the aging antenna systems, the repeater systems that, you know, are at these sites, the repeaters, both the sheriff's systems and the fire systems are at or end of life with limited supports and parts from the manufacturers. So therefore, our recommendation is that the county replace all of the existing repeaters with what's standards-based, Project 25 compliant. And this is for a number of reasons explained in the report, but for interoperability with other systems, for grant funding, and also it provides backwards compatibility with analog. for grant funding, and also it provides backwards compatibility with analog. So it serves many purposes, but at least it's a standard space and not a proprietary technology that we're recommending. Also with the capability to upgrade in the future. As I mentioned, the sheriff's office also has a standalone repeater. So we're recommending the same action as far as replacing it with a P twenty-five compatible repeater so that that is, that works with the countywide system. And we, there are also control stations at the sheriff's office that interact with the repeaters on the mountain top sites, on the remote sites. So those are also aging and end of life and also require replacement. And there are also a number of desktops or base radios throughout the county that we saw for a number of fire agencies. You know, we are recommending replacing those units as well as the associated antenna systems. And again, just for remote monitoring of all site alarms, equipment alarms, to be able to diagnose system outages remotely, we are recommending a new network management system. Interoperable communications is very important. And, you know, we learned this while we were talking to the stakeholders, to the agencies that report, you know, list over twenty different agencies and departments within the county that need to talk to each other and as well as with other mutual aid partners. So that is very important. And, you know, we recommend that the new system, the upgraded system, maintain what exists today. We definitely don't want to lose any functionality. But as well as improving interoperable communications between the county and outside agencies and also tribal agencies like T D N and UROC and like the prison too, that's mentioned in the report. So, you know, and to achieve this, you know, there's going to be some naming conventions that should be updated, that's recommended in the report. And there's also going to be training needed to access some of these channels that'll be programmed in each other's radios, the new sites that'll be online, as well as, you know, any technologies that allow that interoperable communication between systems, given there are some standalone systems. There are, you know, hardware gateways that can be implemented to, and, and patching at dispatch to allow for that improved interoperable communications. I believe the last section that I will talk about is subscriber functionality. Again, the inventory is a work in progress. So we, we're, we only have a couple of pieces left to complete the inventory of all the radios that all of the agencies have in the county. So that way we can do our complete analysis of what can be used, what requires replacement for that compatibility with the system infrastructure, the standard space radio system. So we will do that full analysis in the next phase. But we do know that there are, as same with the infrastructure, some aging radios, the actual terminals, the handheld units and the vehicle radios that are end of life. And we are also recommending replacing those with the standards-based P twenty-five compliant radios that allow that analog capability as well as the future, you know, trunking capabilities if the county ever goes to that configuration. And I will hand it over to Chuck for findings on dispatch operations.
Okay, yeah, I was able to visit the sheriff's dispatch operation during our site visit. And I want to commend their dispatchers for their dedication and to the job. They have a challenging job, as everybody knows. So I appreciate their cooperation and help in answering my questions. As you know, the sheriff's dispatch is the only nine-one-one public safety answering point in the county. So everything comes through, all nine-one-one calls come into that operation. Currently, they're allocated six positions, and this, and this was as of our site visit. And I can't say whether it's changed or not. They have six allocated positions, but only four are currently filled. So they are down in a small center like this, it's a significant amount. There is usually staffed with one dispatcher per shift. Sometimes they will have two if they know that there's going to be a high call volume or some special event that requires additional help. So we recommend that the two vacant positions be filled as soon as possible. There is a staffing crisis in the United States for dispatch centers. But however, we, and we think in Phase Two, we can come up with some hopeful solutions for those, being able to recruit those. The dispatch staff does have limited experience. The most senior person is, has eighteen months experience. That is not a whole lot, but she is, she is doing an excellent job. One of the, one of the things that we will look at in Phase Two is to, you know, improve dispatch hiring. We need to review the pay and benefits for the dispatcher's positions and what is comparable in, in other counties surrounding Del Norte. The other point that we found was the, we need to have a dispatch supervisor with dedicated time to work with the dispatchers and technicians that can help with the continuity of, of operations. So everybody knows what's going, or we have one person that's kind of knows everything that's going on. And finally, as Louis mentioned, the radio consoles that are in the dispatch center are fifteen to twenty years old. They, they're at their, end of their life cycle. Their replacements or upgrades are not being made for them. So we recommend, again, that we replace them with P twenty-five compliant consoles. Again, the, the benefit there is not only to have equipment that can be updated and maintained while, while keeping the same functionality that they have today, but also have the ability to upgrade, if the systems upgrade, that they are compatible with that.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. So just, just in summary, the, the, the request is to seek approval to continue on to Phase Two. We will continue with the, with these findings. We'll actually do a more detailed analysis and evaluation of the systems. As you've heard, the radio and the dispatch are end of life, meaning that spare parts and, you know, they're not, not easily available. So if you do have an outage, it's hard to maintain, to keep it operational. We will take a look at some of the, the coverage issues that have been identified. I think it was fourteen that Louis had mentioned that had been reported by the users during the interviews. So we will take a look at that and, and other aspects of the system. And then finally, as Chuck mentioned, we'll research and, and give a little bit more evaluation and review of the staff and recruitment to see if we can actually help with, with getting those dispatch staff more attracted to, to the county. And, and then identifying, you know, training for, for that as well. So this phase would, with, with your approval, we'll move on to Phase Two. We'll deliver the gap analysis report by the end of August, that's the current target. And then as soon we move on to Phase Three as well, which is actually the recommendations report. And there will be a budget provided in the recommendations report as well, so. Yeah, I think, I think that that's all I have. Are there any questions? As, as I said earlier, we have delivered the report. So there is an extensive report that's got a lot more information. We try to keep this, you know, short and just to the point. But if you need any information, it's in the report that's been provided to the county.
Well, thank you, Dave. Is there any questions or comments from the board?
Dave, this is Supervisor Dean Wilson. Have questions about interoperability capabilities that you're seeking to do. I know we had an ACU one thousand, still have it, although I don't think we have currently anybody that is on staff that had the training necessary to actually operate that or whether that unit is even still serviceable or operational with the, with the new standards. And if, whether or not that could be upgraded or brought into, into service. I also know that with the nine-one-one funding that went out, we bought a portable, what is it? We, we bought a portable base for being able to run it out into, into various areas in case, in case we lost one of our repeaters. So we have a portable repeater that we can run out that's generator operated. And then also the, the ability to deal with CHP as well as federal agents that, that U S Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife, that operate on different bands.
Lewis, can you take that?
Absolutely, appreciate the question. Yes, so as this phase was a gather, gathering of requirements and existing inventory. And the report does capture the, the trailer that's used, the, there's a mobile command vehicle, there is that ACU one thousand gateway, there is even additional transportable repeaters that will be available. And that, but that's in Phase Two is where we will put it together as far as a plan for how it would work with the system upgrades and deploying tho, those transportable repeaters in the field, making sure that the mobile command vehicle also has updated equipment so that that's compatible with the infrastructure, with the radio system. And definitely addressing the, the needs for local county and federal agencies, partner agencies. So we are going to look at all of that. And like I said, that's where the recommendations for hardware, for programming, for channel naming conventions and for training, yes, that is what will come in the next phase. And, and that's where the, the, the communications plan will come into, into fruition for leveraging everything that exists today and improving communications in the future.
On, on your communications recommendation, I know we are hampered currently, especially with the sheriff's office, the new radios they, we recently purchased not too long ago, were only five watt radios, which is grossly insufficient for the, for the terrain that we have in Del Norte County. And also with the change projected by the state of California abandoning Red Mountain, which is, which is a critical part of our infrastructure for communication and the new site on Rattlesnake Ridge, is, is that going to be in their Phase Two as far as modeling of that? It looked like it was.
Absolutely, yes. Rattlesnake and Big Lagoon will be the two replacement sites that will be evaluated in Phase Two. As well as, yes, we understand the limitations, we understand the terrain. I was, you know, there, going throughout the county, the site visits. And we understand those challenges and we will look at, yes, those limited power radios on, you know, both from fire and SO side. But we will look at different antenna patterns, we'll look at, you know, increasing the FCC license power as well. And we will just, again, look at different configurations. Maybe, maybe a different constellation of sites that will provide that improved coverage.
I know we were, we lost coverage when we went from the wideband authorization to narrowbanding. But also the modeling that I've seen by O E S for Rattlesnake is going to drop off our coverage into, into the Glen and Upriver into our operational area. Is that going to be, are there, are there any plans or potential with being able to rectify that in some technological way?
That one is, is a tough to answer today. Again, yes, we will look at what other existing sites may be available to complement the, the Red Mountain replacement sites. So we will look at perhaps, you know, other county-owned, any other, you know, government-owned sites. And then last, you know, there's a couple of other, you know, worst-case scenarios, which would be a lease site from cellular communications operator or, you know, even a greenfield, which would be a raw land build. That, that would be, you know, expensive, but depends on how much coverage is still needed in those areas. If that would be even feasible or even a recommendation. So until we do those coverage evaluations, I, I don't know what that'll look like. But yes, we will look to see what gaps exist by moving away from Red Mountain and moving to Rattlesnake.
I think we'll, we'll do the coverage analysis in the next phase. Will be an interactive sessions with the county. So we can, we can, you know, we won't have the, the actual budget available at the time, but at least we can show what the coverage, what each site as a candidate site could do to help improve your, your, your coverage for the area. So that way we can actually have a couple of, a couple of options to look at and then to, to, to review the, to review those sites with the, with the county. So we, we, what I was trying to point out was we're not going to work in isolation. It's an interactive work phase that we'll go through in the next couple of months.
I just have one question at Supervisor Valerie Starkey. On Phase Two, you note, you indicate that you're going to identify challenges with the dispatch location. I'm assuming that's the physical location as well as make some recommendations. Will you be able to provide us with alternative locations? Is that part of it or is that going to just be limited to whether or not that's a suitable location or not?
Well, I think, I think the, yeah, the question, I mean, the, currently the, the dispatch center is located in the sheriff's office in a small room. We'll certainly look at options in terms of, you know, is that facility adequate for their, for their needs into the future? That's probably my, would be my thing to look at is whether or not you can continue to live in that, in that building or in that space or if there's room that can be changed so that they have more space. But, you know, that's something we'll be looking at.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, I will open this, this up for public comment at this time. If you guys wouldn't mind standing by, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Great presentation and really appreciate us getting updated. More importantly, the board members obviously sharing their knowledge with us today, excellent. With that, I would authorize us to make a motion for Phase Two and Three of the Communication Interoperability Assessment.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Dave and, and crew, thank you for being here with us today. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time and look forward to working with you in the next coming months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to back up, we're going to move to Supervisor Borges. Would you read the proclamation that came out of consent this, today?
Okay, proclamation designating April twenty twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors recognizes that every moment of a child's life is an opportunity to learn and that the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school or in life and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. And whereas, the county acknowledges that our children are our greatest resource and our, that our future will be determined by their innovative talents, ideas and leadership. and that our future will be determined by their innovative talents, ideas, and leadership. And whereas, the role of our people is to accept the responsibility of ensuring that every child experiences an environment at home, at childcare, and at school that will promote the best possible development. And whereas, all communities have the responsibility of offering parents the education, support, and skills needed to provide healthy, safe, and nurturing homes for their children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Delnort County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urges the community to support the efforts of the Delnort Child Abuse Prevention Council, First Five Delnort Child and Families Commission, Delnort Child Care Council, Delnort Juvenile Court, CASA of Delnort, Delnort County Health and Human Services, Licensed Foster Care Homes, Public and Private Agencies, and Programs Advocating for Children in Crescent City, and Parents Who Already Provide a Safe, Loving, Nurturing Environment to Their Children, Free of Any Outside Intervention. Passed and adopted on this 28th day of March 2023.
Thank you. And do we have someone to receive today? There she is.
I'm Smith, I am a capsa board member, and I appreciate this, and the children of Delnort County appreciate this. Delnort County has one of the highest cases of child abuse per capita in the state of California. So it's really important that the citizens realize this, open their eyes, and start reporting what they see. On Saturday at 3:00, we will have a capsa flag raising at the FRC in honor of those abused children in Delnort County.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with our final item on the consent calendar, item number 10. Supervisor Starkey?
It just doesn't have any amount on there. And while, of course, I'm going to be wanting to have, you know, our sheriff deputies and staff to be acknowledged, I do think that we should have some sort of cost on there before we approve something. Do we have an idea? Mr. Lopez?
There wasn't a cost provided. You can ask Kylie, I'm not sure what came through with the item. And I'm not certain if UnderSheriff Perry has any idea? Okay.
There was no information, other than what was provided in the recommendation.
The only thing I can say is, this is something that Leaden functions used to carry on through. Leaden would go out and get matching items to be delivered out. It usually cost us under $100, you know, for the five or six recipients that we would normally get. It wasn't a big-ticket item, but usually under $100 was the cost that the Sheriff's Department would absorb. Previously, I just did it, you know, we just did it ourselves, I did it myself, and it was paid out through Leaden, so.
So I'd be willing to approve and authorize this with a cap of, say, $500, then?
In, it doesn't look like it showed up on the public agenda, but in the internal one, it says $50 each, 12 for an estimated $600.
Okay, yeah, that's great. I mean, that's fine. I just, again, if it's not presented, I don't, I can't read a mine, so. All right, so I will approve up to $600 if somebody wants a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this item. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, bring it back. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay. Okay, moving down, we'll go to item number 18. Approve and authorize step increase to A through 13, step H effective March 16, 2023, for the Director of Child Support Services, as requested by the Board of Supervisors.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Item number 19, approve and adopt the attached side letter agreements and resolutions authorizing a 2.5% wage adjustment to all county salary schedules effective March 31, 2023, as authorized by the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment?
I'm not saying people don't deserve a raise, but I think that our department heads get paid way too much. You guys are digging a hole for your pension liability, and, but who am I to stop people from getting their raise? I just thought I'd mention it. Thank you.
Good morning. Norma Williams, Chapter President, Delnort County Employees Association, SEIU 10 to 1. This is just a step, it's a good step, but it's only a step towards addressing wage inequities that exist across the board in all classifications for the county. This only addresses minimum wage, and that was the minimum wage that went up effective January of this year. It does not in any way address the collective good report, which this county spent $158,000 to conduct. It doesn't address the recommendations. It did cost that much, I know. It doesn't address the recommendations of the report, that which, quite frankly, contractually, we are still bound to discuss with the county. The union's not going to forget that. I'm letting our employees know, the ones who we represent, that we're not going to forget that. But that is something that, contractually, we are still bound to address, because there are still wage inequities here against comparable counties. There are reasons why there are still high vacancy rates in all of the classifications, the report, which also apparently addresses most of the classifications we represent. There's a lot of things that the union's going to be monitoring, and this is something that we told employees when we had our recent general meeting. We're going to be monitoring the inflation rate for this current fiscal year. We're going to be monitoring the inflation rate for next fiscal year. We're also going to be monitoring next November 2024's state election. At that time, there's going to be a ballot measure that will pose the question to voters, California voters, to increase, whether to increase the state minimum wage to $18 an hour. We will be monitoring that state election, because that will have a significant impact on our wages. And this, 2024, is a contract year. So, yeah, you may want to kick the can down the road a little bit to address wage inequities, but you still can't ignore this. Whether it's going to be addressing the collective good report, or whether the voters vote to approve an $18 an hour minimum wage in November of 2024, the salary schedules, the salary inequities that all of us are facing will have to be addressed sooner or later. You need to ask yourself the question, do you want to be an employer that will provide good wages, livable wages, fair wages, so that you can recruit and retain your employees? Or do you want to continue to be a revolving door? Thank you.
Any other comment from the public? Bring it back to the board.
I just want to make something clear, just to get ahead of it. So when this gets out into the public, when we are authorizing this 2.5% raise, it does not include the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you for that. Can I do that as well? Any other comments from the board?
The only thing is, this 2.5, we're getting ahead of the minimum wage bump so that we can address the compaction that's going, the compression that's going on in our salary, because our bottom steps were on, were below minimum wage. So this 2.5 brings that bottom step into compliance with it, and then we have to adjust going up so that everything is staying the same in our salary scale. But this is just a Band-Aid. And, you know, and unfortunately, when we're looking at this initiative on the ballot, and with the inflationary costs and everything that's going on, what we're going to be facing is, we're going to be basically unable in the future to address and meet the dollars. And so what's going to end up happening is, we're going to end up having to, in order to make those salaries work, and in order to pay that upping the minimum wage, is, and to adjust everything going up, is we're going to end up losing positions. It's because we only have so much money, and we unfortunately, unlike the federal government, we can't print it. So what ended up, ended happening is, unfortunately, we may end up losing positions as we go forward, as the dollars race above what we bring in.
Any other comments or? A motion at this time would be appropriate?
We do have a motion and a second.
We had a motion and a second. Okay, Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Sorry about that. Looking forward to the, down the agenda. Item 20, approve and adopt, if we're in budget transfers, approve and adopt, transfer 03-03 in the amount of $289,734 within the Intergovernmental Transfer Budget Unit, as requested by the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. Is there any public comment on this item?
What is it for? Anybody? $289,000? And the board remains silent. This is the time where you want to tell the public what it's for. You're not going to answer the question? Do you know what it's for, Mr. Borges?
Well, I wasn't going to interrupt your public comment time. I was going to wait till you're done and call Renella up.
Yeah, well.
Okay, Renella, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, so in the Discussion Summary section of the board report, it explains that the amount is for increased support and care in our General Relief Program, a portion of it, and then the substance used to disorder services. So as we talked about in the previous item for the treatment services in Humboldt County, we need to, since those have increased, we need to increase that budget line.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Is there any other public comment on this item? Just want a close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second on that motion.
Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Moving on to Legislative and Budget Issues. Item number 21 is approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of opposition to AB 742, which would prohibit the use of an unleashed canine by law enforcement to apprehend a person, and to use that canine for crowd control, as requested by myself.
I appreciate you adding this to the agenda, and I would move that we approve the letter.
Thank you.
And I will second it. I just want, and I appreciate that the letter does also state that the only thing that the bill would prohibit is making it illegal for unleashed police canine to apprehend and crowd control. It still could be utilized for community events, as well as school demonstration, narcotic vehicle searches, et cetera.
Thank you for that second. Is there a public comment on this item?
Supervisors, UnderSheriff Devin Perry. I'd like to thank you for your letter of opposition to this bill, 742. With ever-increasing level in number of violent felons and police contact with those individuals, taking away resources from law enforcement, I feel like is counterproductive, and it's also going to just pose more of a threat to the community and officers themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comment. Seeing no other public comment, Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, item number 20.
I just wanted to say that a well-trained canine is a tremendous asset. But restricting them to only, to be on a lead is counterproductive. Those canines are utilized to go into dangerous situations, whether it's pursuit of a fleeing suspect, whether it's a search in the woods, whether it's a search through a house. They go where the officer doesn't have to go. We put the animal at risk so that the officers don't have to be at risk. And this type of legislation, which is going to gut those kinds of utilizations, is counterproductive, and again, it puts our own personnel highly at risk, and the dogs are, a well-trained dog is an amazing, amazing tool. Thank you.
Completely agree, thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Okay, item 22, approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the Talawadini Nation's request for funding for the wastewater infrastructure through the US Army Corps of Engineers Environmental Infrastructure Program, as requested by Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is actually a letter, as stated, for support for the Talawadini Nation. As you're aware, there's a legacy sewage pond issue just south of the ship ashore that's been there for quite some time, that services much of the residential community at the ship. Those ponds are pretty outdated, as one could expect, and potential for groundwater contamination has been going on quite frequently within that area. So really appreciative to the Talawadini Nation for finally addressing this and providing a resource. I know Tim Hoon is here with us today. If any questions from the board are needed at this time.
Is there any question from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
I will second.
And a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, we're getting there. Item 23, approve and authorize the use of Measure R funds. I didn't realize you wanted to say something, Tim, I apologize.
No. I should have spoken before. Tim Hoon, Planning Director of Talawadini Nation, District 3 resident. Thanks, thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your support. It's a critical infrastructure project that provides wastewater services to 150, you know, households out there in Smith River, and we're working diligently to pursue funding. It's a 20-plus million dollar fix to, you know, this older infrastructure, but bit by bit, we're working away at it. And this support is very helpful in what's needed to get these dollars from Washington down here to Delnort County. So, thank you.
Good bet, Tim. Thank you for pursuing this. It's going to be nice to see that back up and around. Okay, item 23, approve and authorize the use of Measure R funds for the Sheriff's Office and Veterans Memorial Hall Public Parking Lot Rehab Project. Who is on the Capital Improvements Technical Advisory Committee? You guys want to speak to this, or?
Go ahead. Well, thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is a couple of capital improvement projects that were identified by staff. As the board knows, we were kind of reluctant to dedicating a Measure R funding for projects until we kind of knew what the outcome of Measure U would be. We had, were able to compile a fund balance through the first part of Measure R last fiscal year. We have approximately $1.2 million set aside for capital improvements, and these are two items that were identified by staff, brought to the Technical Advisory Committee for Capital Improvements, which Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Borges are on, and it is now before the board to approve and authorize the use of Measure R funds for these two projects.
Yeah. Thank you for those recommendations to the Technical Advisory Committee. Think it's a far worthwhile project for the Measure R funds. With that, I'd make the motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a comment, but.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, Supervisor Starkey?
Yeah, this is very, this is a very vital program, or... Yeah, this is very, this is a very vital program or project. When are we going to get a chance to see the remaining projects? Is there a way that the whole board can see these so that we can discuss and prioritize?
Yes, that was also discussed briefly at the technical advisory level. Building Maintenance Director Alan Ogradoff has been working with Building Official Dave Thompson to develop the capital improvement plan and update that. We currently have the plan that is good through 2025. When the last plan was approved, it was 2020 through 2025. Because we've actually accomplished quite a few of those projects and completed those, we're going to update it prior to 2025. And so we're hoping in the next couple of months, Alan has pretty much finalized the assessment of all the county-owned facilities. So now it's just putting a cost to that, prioritizing projects based on health and safety first, and then also the need because of deferred maintenance, and bringing that to the board for your approval.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kylie, we've got a motion and a second. Would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Okay, final item is this urgency item, the letter of support from Pacific Corps and their grant application for funding through the U.S. Department of Energy, Grid, Reliance, and Innovation Partnership. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll move to approve.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, will you pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes, for me as well. I believe I got everything, Kylie. What do you think?
Yeah, and I just want to say for the public as well, this letter, the way the new system is now, I'll be able to add it as an urgency item in the minutes, and the letter will be attached so they can see it.
Very good. Thank you for that information, appreciate it. With that, we will adjourn this meeting until our next regular scheduled meeting, April 11. Have a great day, everyone.